I'd like to call the July 20th meeting of the Board of Education to order. And I did not realize my microphone was on when I said corn palace. Sure, some of you are wondering what in the heck does that have to do with anything? And it's a lovely place in South Dakota that you...
I'm just there.
Everybody has to stop by, especially if you've never been there because I had to stop and later than I made sure Dennis stopped when he went through there. It's a nice lovely place. Made out of corn. All join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and for all of our many guests. Would like to welcome you to our meeting and remind you, as I have done for the last six months, that we do videotape our meetings. Videotaping equipment is in the back of the rooms, kind of face this way. So if you want to make sure that you get on the videotape, please turn around and wave to the cameras. If you would rather you didn't get on there, don't turn around. And the first item of our business today is the adoption of agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adopt our agenda, please.
Mr. President, all the board members, I move to approve the agendas presented this evening. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very well, our agenda is adopted. We do not have any presentations tonight, Ms. Linda. And we have comments from the public.
There are no comments.
All right. So we move right along to our superintendent's report. Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, board members, members of the audience, I'm super excited to be here this evening to serve in my first official act in the school board room space. So that's super exciting for me as your new superintendent. I'll give a brief superintendent's report, given my 13 days on the job, but I did inherit a district that's extremely busy during the summer months. For the benefit of our board and audience, school starts August 16th. The first day of school, of course, is on a Wednesday, and we will have transition day activities on Monday, August 14th, for all of our students in their 7th grade and all of our freshmen in high school. We also have elementary meet the teacher nights that are scheduled from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Monday, August 14th at several of our schools and the following Thursday at others. And you'll see the list there in your report, and of course, we're publicizing that information. Online enrollment, I entered the district in year two of that implementation. I would tell you that we started with several phone calls, but by all sentiments, we have fewer calls than previous, than the previous year. And I had an interesting conversation at Rotary with Dennis Smith today with a parent who said that she was not as vocal while in front of her computer screen this year as she was in previous years. So based on that comment, we're moving in the right, in the right direction. And at this time, board members, we have well over half of our families who have completed the process. 10,240 or so families have completed online registration. One of the most exciting things in this report is to walk into a district and realize that you have three high school students from Lee's Summit West, Dr. Sharp, who made a perfect score on the ACT.
Wow.
And those students are Alex Gehagen, Allison Salamon, and Molly Wooster. And just to put that into context, you're talking about 1/10th of 1% of all test takers. 1/10th of 1% of all test takers. So that's very, very exciting for our school district community. Board members, be mindful of Monday, August 7th, the Chamber of Commerce will host its annual New Teacher Breakfast. This is a longstanding tradition, from what I understand in the community, in partnership with UCM, who will sponsor that breakfast. And all of our chamber member businesses will donate those small gifts, notepads, pens, and the like, and each teacher walks away with a goodie bag to start the new year. Michelle Up to Grove, who's the district's 2016 Teacher of the Year, will serve as the keynote speaker. Returning teachers will come to work on August 9th, and as you all know, many administrators are already working in their buildings in preparation for the upcoming school year. Several of you attended our District Leader Institute during our lunching on Tuesday, and we appreciate your presence in that space. And I believe we had two fine, fine days in terms of setting the direction for the upcoming school year. I want to give a special shout out to Ms. Ismerd and Dr. Collier, as they served as project leads for the two days, and I believe we have really struck the right tone with our administration around the board's priorities that we're anticipating approval on tonight, departmental priorities, and analyzing those strengths and opportunities inherent in our, in our data. Mike Walker, a bus mechanic, I can't wait to meet Mike, but he was awarded Missouri's Best Technician. Missouri's Best Technician, as awarded by the Missouri Association of Pupil Transportation. So that's very, very exciting and yet another winner here in our school district community. State funding for ACT is something that we're in the midst of working on. You received some information in my superintendent or board update last Friday. And to be direct, the state is experiencing a $4 million shortfall as it relates to allocations in the state's assessment budget coming from Jefferson City. And if you recall, we've had two years of consensus administration of 11th grade ACT. And this is going to cause us to possibly relook at that practice and make a decision in the coming days in terms of how we move forward. Put another way, I believe families may have grown accustomed to this administration, and we may decide, as many districts around us have decided, to continue with that offering even at the district's expense. And that's something Dr. Collier and her team are working through as we, as we speak. I believe the board's work around fee reductions is being very well received in the community, just as a reminder of your previous action and as for the benefit of our audience. Several reductions in fees as we move into the new, the new school year. The $10 per student activity fee and programming fee that was previously assessed to all students and generated about $86,320 has been eliminated. So I believe our parents will receive that well, and those were parents of all of our middle and high school students who would have paid the fee in previous years. Our Chromebook replacement and repair fund, we're reducing that payment from our families from $30 to $25 per student. And also, our high school parking fee will be reduced to $10 from the $25 that was previously Probably one of the more exciting pieces, in addition to our ACT piece, is the opportunity that I've had in the last 13 days to really participate with key community members and learn more about the school district community. One of the most exciting things was a bus ride. And if you recall the foundation gala, one of the auction items was a bus ride around the community with Attorney Chinnery and Dr. Herzog. And about 25 community members, along with board members Clark and Fritchie, participated on that bus ride, and we went to the museum, and they gave us a lot of history. I didn't know one of the downtown buildings was one of the first hospitals in the community. And we learned about the delayed opening of Westview because of a steel strike. And these gentlemen were just a wealth of information, but it gave me an opportunity to engage with a segment of the community that I might not have otherwise. And that was extremely exciting for, for me. I'll just conclude by saying the community has really, really greeted myself and my family in a manner that makes me feel good to be in R7, and I'm quickly learning the meaning of what it is to be R7 proud. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. The next part of our agenda are reports from our board members who attend various committee meetings and other meetings across the community. And we would like, if you, if you have a report, please be sure to make that. If you do not, you may pass. And not all committees, as I want to explain, meet every month. Some meet quarterly, some meet semi-annually, some meet for like two weeks every day, but then don't meet again. So it's a variety of different things, but we want to make sure that any board member who has had an opportunity to attend a committee meeting lately has an opportunity to report that out. So Kim, I will start down there with you.
Okay, I'm representing the board on the Lee Summit Educational Foundation Board. And basically, here's our report. We kicked off the R7 Annual Fund Drive by presenting the information to all of our district and building administrators. We're close to 100% participation in the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, just waiting for, for folks who weren't at that meeting to determine whether we have a full 100%. But our, our staff campaign will start August the 23rd and run through September the 6th for the, all the staff in the district. Next, we will present our Friends of the Foundation information to our school board, which is what I'm doing tonight, and to our foundation board at the next meeting. We would love to have 100% participation before Cheryl Frankie takes those requests for support to the rest of the community. So I have given each of you an envelope at your place tonight where you can make that commitment if you would like. Also, Race for the Future 5K is scheduled for Saturday, October the 14th, and it's our hope that our seven board members will register online. And if you hurry, you get the early bird rate. You can come join us for a great community event that supports the education of our children in the district and many of our elementary schools and some of the other schools like to have a fun competition to see how many students they can get to participate in that. And so it's always a fun day, would love to see you guys there. You also have a Race for the Future player in your packet that I gave you. On July the 12th, I also had the pleasure attending with Dr. Carpenter and Jackie Clark of Bud and Carl's Excellent Adventure is what it was called. And it really was truly excellent. He gave you basically the particulars, but it was so much fun riding around the school district on the big yellow bus. It was air conditioned, thank goodness. But we, we literally started off at the historical museum, and we went clear out to Buckner-Tarsney Road and saw the property that Mr. Knoll donated to the foundation and the district. And then went back by Lake Ladawanna where Carl told us a few interesting tidbits about Lake Ladawanna, and then headed back for home. It was very well organized, I must say, by Cheryl Frankie and her assistant, Sarah. They had a fun little trivia contest before we even left. They fed us some refreshments, and, and that was really educational as well. It was great to have Dr. Carpenter along. But what a fantastic history lesson told through some of the icons and stage leaders of our community. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kim. Julie?
Kim, did those wheels on the bus go round and round?
They sure did.
Thank you. All right, Lee Summit Cares is gearing up for our next school year, so they're kind of on a hiatus. Phyllis and I have a big day long next Thursday with Lee Summit, Team Lee Summit, so we're both really excited about that. And this really isn't my program, but New Teacher Breakfast, I just want everyone to know that all the new teachers in all of Lee Summit, if you're a chamber member, get those bags. So Our Lady of the Presentation, St. Michael, Summit Christian Academy, that all the new teachers get one of those bags, we deliver them to their schools. I just wanted to let everyone know that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Jackie, I'll pop down to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
In June, of course, the chamber meets monthly with its government relations committee, and that's the assignment I have. We had some inquiry regarding some of our student data, and we are providing that. We've been working with Dr. Carpenter and with Linda on preparing that information to return to that group. We'll have that next meeting next week, and I'll be in attendance at that event. We also have had the opportunity to see several of the elected officials here in the area that touched the district, and I was fortunate to be able to visit with Mike Serpoy, Rebecca Raber, and Dan Stacy, as well as Donna Fauch in the last month at a couple of different events. And one was around a, a program that pharmacies are utilizing in Missouri regarding preventing the manufacture of methamphetamines. So that was a really great opportunity to interact with those, several of those folks at that time. And I've already had the opportunity to visit with one of the candidates that might succeed. Again, filing has not begun and/or closed for 2018, a gentleman named Dr. John Patterson. So that would be the open Mike Serpoy seat. So also Glenn Kolkmeier from over in Higginsville, one of the house leaders was in town too, and I had the opportunity to visit with him. So a busy, busy four weeks since we were all last to go.
Thank you, Jackie. Dennis?
Just, we had a TIF meeting, as I told you, back in June, or in May, excuse me. And at that time, oh, we had a TIF meeting in May, which was concerning some property at View High in Third Street. For those of us that have been around here for a while, we know that as the Brevilia property. That's up there right across from the golf course and adjacent to Longview. Interesting meeting. TIFs are not always good deals for school districts. There was a lot of conversation. Adam and I did meet with the applicants at a later time, but that meeting was, the motion was to move it, and we met again on June the 26th. It is a small piece of property. After much discussion, there was a motion and approved to move the, this on to the city council. Probably, the TIF would only take place if, if the project is successful. Really does not entail a great deal of burden to the school district if it, if it would happen. Again, it's kind of, it was a whole really different kind of thing as far as different portions as to how that would be TIFed. But that did move on, and I don't know when it is on the agenda for the, for the council, but at some point in time, July, August, probably that will come before then. That is really only that particular committee during that time.
Thank you, Dennis. Phyllis?
Yes. Have served on the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee. As you know, Brad Rackers was our teacher selected here in Lee Summit. He has gone on to be a regional finalist. I have not heard word, but he is one of the finalists in Missouri. Very proud of him. And I'm excited about Team Lee Summit. I've shifted gears, I was on the foundation representative for five years, and I'm really excited to dig in with Julie and work with the great folks on the Team Lee Summit. And other than that, ready for the New Teacher Breakfast as well. It's a lot of fun. That's all I'd say.
The only report that I have is just one that's pending, and we'll, we'll take some action on it tonight, and it's a resolution that we have on the agenda in support of teacher tenure through the MSBA platform. Kim and I attended that meeting in June, and we came away a little dismayed that that platform plank is still there after we objected to it a couple of years ago still. So there will be a piece on the agenda tonight that we will, we will look at as a board. If that should be approved, then we'll, we'll move that forward. So that's the only thing that, that I have on my report. So that concludes our reports section of our agenda and moves us then to our finance report. I believe Mr. Smith has the duty tonight.
Thank you, Bob. We met yesterday morning. Adam is, was out of town, but we did, he, he worked with us on the, through a conference call as we went through the meeting yesterday morning. I will go through these, the different parts of what we discussed yesterday. Our investments through June total approximately $107.8 million. The revenue and expense report, operating revenues are slightly higher than budgeted revenue for the year. Expenses are less than budget and comparable to prior year expenses percentage. The revenue and expense report will be revised following the completion of final fiscal year procedures. A revised revenue and expense report and a June balance sheet will be provided at a future meeting. The other issues that we dealt with, MIC Change Order Number 11. Change Order Number 11 includes 13 items involving a variety of changes within the building due to code, design, and owner-driven requests. The change orders are a result in an overall credit to the contract. The project is currently behind schedule, but R7 staff are monitoring daily work activities, and R7 crews have begun working to assist with getting the buildings ready for students. And we have a district improvements change order number two. Change Order Number Two includes four items, all due to unforeseen issues at the remodel of Lee Summit Elementary Kitchen and updates at Pleasant Lee Middle School. The largest item on the change order includes the cost to remove and replace the concrete slab following the removal of the existing tile at LSU, LSE. Additional transportation staff, due to school bus routing for the early childhood special education programming changes, transportation has requested the addition of six bus drivers and eight bus aides. The dedicated transportation routes will allow for the program to return to a Monday through Thursday instructional program, providing early learners with a more predictable school routine. The additional transportation costs will be eligible for state and federal reimbursement. Diversity and recruitment training, following a competitive bid process, the Human Resource Department is recommending the use of services from all world languages and cultures incorporated to insist with industry, diversity recruitment, strategic marketing, analysis of the current application process, and interviewing training. This work is consistent with the action plans and the district comprehensive school improvement plan. The cost for services will be funded from existing budgets within the human resources and professional development. Meal prices, following analysis of the price increase needed to comply with the federal paid lunch equity formula to cover increasing salary benefit and food costs, staff is recommending a 5 to 10 cent meal price increase for students. With the increase, the district meal prices will remain competitive, competitive with neighboring KC natural area schools. That is what we discussed yesterday. I would, I put a motion forward to approve the transfer of $9,992,951.46 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Do you have a motion in a second to approve revenue fund to the special revenue fund? Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second motion is to recommend that we approve this treasurer's report and payment of bills.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's report and payment of bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Item seven on our agenda is the first part of our consent agenda. And as we have been explaining each month, and I know for those of you who are here on a regular basis, this is old hat, but for those in our, our television audience who have not watched our board meetings before, we are allowed by parliamentary procedure and by the state to place certain items on our consent agenda. These items are items that the board has discussed and have, has seen ahead of time. This first series of items is mostly routine items that would be things like approval of minutes and ratifying contracts that are under $5,000, some of which are just maybe $200 or $300 at the most, many of it are even less than that. These are all things that are set out ahead of time, so we have an opportunity to, to look at those. So at this point, I would accept a motion.
Mr. President and fellow board members, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Those items include 7.01 through 7.08, sorry, 7.09 as presented this evening.
Second, okay, we have a motion in a second. Julie?
It's probably something small, but the Nano Nation, should one of those say Lee Summit North? There's two that say Lee Summit, and one, does it matter if it's on, it says Lee Summit West, Lee Summit High School, and then, or Lee Summit, does it say north somewhere? 7.02.
It was in the ratified contract section. It's the Nano, I noticed that as well.
I mean, if it...
Do we have anybody who can answer that question? It just cut off.
The last one says Lee Summit North.
It is Lee Summit North? Okay.
Thank, no, that's all right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Hey, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very well, the consent agenda items, number seven, are passed. Okay, the second part is our second consent agenda, and as we've been indicating for quite some time now, this has been shrinking, and it has finally shrunk to where it's gone. So we're very excited about this. These are larger contracts that have had to be executed prior to the board being able to approve them, so they are ratified by the board after the fact. And these are usually emergency items that the superintendent or his designee have had to approve, such things as sometimes payment of electrical bills and that type of thing which fall into this category. This month, we do not have any of those, so that's good. Under item nine, and I think we had some staff comments on item nine before we continued on that.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, board members, I'll only bring your attention to items 9.02 and 9.03 as they directly reflect the superintendent and some of his work going forward. The National Center for Education Research and Technology is a national organization of select superintendents, about 75 superintendents from across the country. It's an invitation-only organization, and I was fortunate enough to be invited about two years ago. And I've also been named a member of that national board. And what we do is we meet twice per year and look at cutting-edge strategies for school districts that are doing some pretty groundbreaking work. The beauty of it is you get to engage with individuals who are normally seen in a 5,000, 4,000-person conference setting. And one of the obligations is for that individual, whether it be someone the likes of Robert Marzano or Mike Smoker or whoever, they have to stay for the entire conference, and they have to interact with you during the lunch breaks and for breakfast and that entire piece. So you really get to pick their brains on a much more intimate level. So that's something that I participate in in terms of my own development, and it's there for your approval this evening. And item 9.03, that item is of no cost to the district, and it's not a membership, but what's reflected in 9.03 is an appointment made by the commissioner of our great state. She appointed me to serve as the superintendent representative for the state in what's called the Central Comprehensive Center meeting space. And that's required per federal statute that there be a sitting superintendent, a State Department official, and a legislator. And I am that superintendent representative in that group, and we'll have our annual out-of-state meeting. It's generally somewhere in the Midwest, but this meeting will be in New Mexico. And I look forward to bringing that information back in terms of what's going on that could impact us here locally at the federal level. So I just wanted to bring attention to the two items, given that they involve the superintendent in sometime out of district.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Okay, we are ready for a motion on consent agenda items nine.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we accept the items for decision in consent agenda, new contracts under $5,000, 9.01 through 9.11.
Actually, it's, it's going to go down to 20.
Okay.
9.20.
Excuse me.
It doesn't all show up there. There it goes.
9.20? 9.20, excuse me.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, 9.01 through 9.20. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, we have a second. We have a couple of comments. Julie, or Kim?
Okay, just to start, I would just like to address 9.0 for the diversity and recruitment training. And to do that, I just thought it would be helpful for our patrons to have a little bit of background on this three-year contract with world languages and cultures that's on this agenda. So I'd like to hear from Dr. Miller, if we could, on that.
Absolutely. Actually, it's a one-year contract that's renewable up to three. But one of the things that I'm really excited about within this area is if you look at our CSIP, long... long, we've had a longstanding really goal of improving our quality candidates, especially in the area of our minority candidates. And we've done many things systemically through our CSIP process, and this is the first time in district history that we actually have this written down as a district goal. Systemic action last year included the start of the cadet program. I think this is gonna serve as a springboard, not necessarily the answer, because I think that the answer lies within Lee Summit, but a springboard for us to continue to make improvement in this area. So I'm looking forward to this, I think that our principals are looking forward to also. We've worked with Dr. Gumpsey, who is a local person, very connected, has done a lot of good work for the district. And through the process that we had, which was very detailed, we started back actually in January for the RFP process, we narrowed that down. And so I'm looking forward to the work, I think it's gonna be very positive, I think more importantly, it's going to reflect what our board's gonna look at later, which are the goals of having a positive effect on student achievement, and that's what we're all about.
Julie?
All right, with that being said, is Dr. Gumpsey gonna be the facilitator for that?
Yeah, great question, we've actually met with Dr. Gumpsey a couple different times. Specifically, we revised this back in late May and June. When the, our RFP originally went out, we were looking at a three-year segment. And I think through the conversation, detailed conversation of the team, we really felt like we wanted to narrow it down to one year, have some systemic goals that we can measure and evaluate, and then make a determination moving forward. Based upon the conversation we had with Dr. Gumpsey in a meeting in my office, he will be the primary leader with this training, with the advertisement, and more importantly, taking a third-party objective look at how we process things in HR to provide a level playing field for all quality candidates.
So with that being said, the people that are in the meetings and getting facilitated too, are they gonna be able to take it to the next person and spread what they've learned from Dr. Gumpsey?
Yeah, and I think what you're talking about is perhaps utilizing a train-the-trainer model. And in certain cases, that will be the case, but not in all cases. We want to make sure that Dr. Gumpsey's a point person, for example, for our BTAP group. And so he will do all the training for all of our beginning teachers. And the idea there is, once again, systemically, starting to bring all people on board. And then we really want to focus in the area of our interview teams. One of the things that I think we do well, but it also causes some extra work, is that we involve stakeholders at the lowest level when it comes to, you know, our interview process. We haven't done a good job, and this is where we're trying to improve, in training those teams. And so I think Dr. Gumpsey will be directly connected to that training. With the intent, though, going back, moving forward, that we start taking that over internally, you know, as we progress. So by all means, he will be the direct contact as, in the beginning. Yep. Great questions.
Dennis, did you have a question?
Jeff, just real quick, if we were to enter into an extended agreement down the road after this one year, what will, what, what will that look like? I understand what you're, and what we're trying to do in training and all this, and involves stakeholders. What discussions were there for, if we were to proceed for next couple of years?
Yeah, great question, and I think that really justifies the approach that we took with looking at one year at a time. Instead of trying to do this carte blanche, three-year, and not really having some systemic direction. So this year, we're gonna look at the data, we have three focus areas that Dr. Gumpsey's going to work on. And that's gonna provide, not only with his input, a small team to review that data, it's gonna allow our internal administration to dive deep into it, look at our own processes, make some changes, et cetera. And I think what's unique is, then based upon our needs, make an informed decision about whether we do in fact move on to phase two with Dr. Gumpsey, maybe offer another RFP, or look at internalizing some processes ourself and taking that and marching forward with our seven administration. So do we have a detailed focus on what phase two is gonna look like? The answer to that is no. Do we know that we need a phase two, and that this is just a springboard for doing good quality work? The answer is yes.
Yeah, I didn't expect, I mean.
Yeah, no, great question.
I'm sure in your discussion, you looked to the future on what.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If we have no other questions, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, those items are approved. This takes us to our items for decision, which sounds like it's a bit redundant because we've been deciding. But these are items, each one of these items will be discussed individually. And we start with the top item, which is ten point zero one, approved board priorities for twenty seventeen eighteen. And who is, up to Dr. Carpenter, is that yours?
Absolutely. For the benefit of the audience, our board participated in a two-day institute on June seventh and eighth. And out of that work, we challenged ourselves to commit to our direction for the upcoming school year. And we called in the senior staff here at the diocese with us, and we really processed through what the upcoming school year should look like. And via that work, we received some good feedback from the board and administration, and we've identified our three, what I want to call priorities, for the new school year, to kind of guide our work. Item number one, although I would say that the items are not in rank order, I think it's always important for us to begin with student achievement, and you'll see that there in item one, to increase the learning and achievement of every child through the development of a comprehensive academic framework, informed by number one, the needs of our students, number two, the district strategic plan, and number three, the twenty sixteen academic systems review. I think last spring, the board had an opportunity to delve into the academic systems review document, and it offered lots of opportunity as it relates to recommendations and findings in the district as it relates to the academic program. So I'll only offer that we triangulate that with the CSIP or the district strategic plan, but primarily the needs of our students. And that started during our leadership institute this week. And I think our staff, primarily our administration, is ready to commit to a focus academically that's steep in equity for all students. And I think that's where priority one shows up. Priority two, ensure equitable access to twenty-first century learning environments by engaging stakeholders in the process to update the district's comprehensive facilities master plan to meet the instructional and programming needs of all pre-K twelve students. This is multifaceted as well, and you cannot say that it's not linked also to, to number one. And we're looking at issues of capacity and buildings, but we're also looking at programs and where students might have access to programs or not. And are there any issues of equity related to buildings in their current usage? We kind of assigned administrative team members to be on first base in each area, of course, in priority one. Dr. Collier will be on first base, and of course, in priority two, Dr. Hedrick will be on first base. And then we moved down to priority three, and that's to strengthen public trust in the district's governance leadership team by systemically enhancing communication, involvement, and collaboration to ensure constructive engagement within the school district community. I think we all can agree that there is some opportunity to rebuild some public trust in the school district, and that's what priority three is all about. And of course, Janice Phelan will serve as our point of contact related to priority three. I appreciate all of you and the work that you committed to on June seventh and eighth, and I believe these communities will speak well to the board's attentiveness to the community and its needs.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the board policy, board priorities for twenty seventeen eighteen as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? I would like to, to say that this has, this process that we went through in June was awesome. I mean, it, it was a great opportunity for Dr. Carpenter and the board to sit down and talk about things that really mattered and come up with some things that we felt were important to address. And then to have senior staff come in, and that part of the workshop, I really thought that was great. I mean, I really enjoyed that. Dennis, I think you probably did too, and Kim, I know, that's, that's old, that's old home week for us. I mean, that was kind of the things that we enjoyed doing the most. And I think it was an extremely productive session, we came away with some really good priorities, I'm very excited about these. Any other?
I would just echo that, it was, it was two days of excellence.
It was.
Okay, no other comments, then we have a motion on the table and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, our motion carries. Okay, the, and the next item, item ten point zero two is also, came out of that same workshop. And Dr. Carpenter, I think I'll turn that over to you as well.
Absolutely, Mr. President. We spent some time during that same session really looking at the important work of board superintendent relationship. And we all know that the most important relationship in a school district is that of teacher and student. But not too far behind is the importance of the board superintendent relationship and the impact that that can have on the overall culture of the learning environment. And through this work, we've kind of agreed upon some norms that we will not violate intentionally in terms of our work together. And with the board's support of this item, I believe it's important to share the newly adopted, if we get to that point, board superintendent norms with the greater community. To see that we've really given thought to our operations in the area of preparation for meetings, in the area of confidentiality, board members on committees, and the approval of, board members, I'm sorry, and committee assignments approved by the board, effective communications, school visits, how do we go about that, how do we respond to media? And the simple notion of respect, and how do we respect each other in this professional space? What happens up here matters because it filters down to the staff, and that impact can be extremely positive. Or if we're not careful, it might not be extremely positive. So I think this is very important as we set the course and realize that we are the lead learners in the school district, and we are the models of what effective governance looks like. So I'm excited about the priorities, and I'm excited about these norms, Mr. President, and would ask for the board's support.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the board superintendent norms as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on this item?
Just a quick, a quick note, Saturday I was going, I looked over everything on Fri. Oh, I was on. Friday I looked over the board packet and update, and then Saturday I kind of sat down and was going through again. So I had a couple of questions. It's Saturday, I send them out, not expecting, you know, Monday you can address them. Fifteen minutes later, Linda sends me a, a text back, or email back, and then later they got to Carpenter, so. Really, they could have taken Saturday and Sunday off and got back with you that time. But it was refreshing to see how that, how that all worked out.
Kim?
Well, I've got to beat on that one, Dennis, I actually, when I was going through board packet, still yesterday, or the night before, I think about midnight, I, on Sunday, or two nights ago, I emailed President White, Dr. Carpenter, and Linda Ismerd with a couple of little questions that I had too, so I was very last minute. So I will try, I vow to improve my questioning technique and follow the norms. The main thing I wanted to say on this one is, under the area of school visits, I was happy to see that we put this on here because one of my main goals for the year is to get out into every single building in the district and just get to know the buildings and get to know the, because each building has its own distinct personality, as well as transportation, facilities, and all of the different areas of our school district. So I'm looking forward to doing that, but poor Linda Ismerd is going to have to schedule all of our appointments for that according to this norm. And, but she's a saint anyway, she doesn't mind doing it, she'll tell you, oh, that's my job, I love it. And I think she really does, because she does respond super quick to us. But anyway, I'm just really looking forward to that, thank you.
And I, and I would like for him to know that my phone dings when, when I get an email from any of you all, and it's right next to my bed.
Oh, gosh.
And I go to bed at like eight. No, I'm only kidding, but no, it does.
I do have a question, Mr. President. So if we are invited to be a judge for spelling bee.
That's not the same.
That's not the same, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I think our norm really refers only to official school visits where you, you're gonna be in the building as a board member in that, in that special. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Very well, this passes as well. Okay, the next piece is the piece that Kim and I worked on, this is our MSBA amendment. And Kim, I'm gonna let you handle that, since you wrote that.
My fault this time. I'm just going to read you a little bit of the text here so that you all get a, kind of a grasp of what's going on with this when we went to the MSBA delegate assembly. As part of that, in June twenty seventeen, there was a draft of the MSBA legislative advocacy positions that was presented to all of the delegates. In one section of that, under teacher contracts, it read, "MSBA supports renewable contracts for teachers and that they are more consistent with excellence in education than lifetime contracts." This is something that we disagree with. The rationale for proposing that this amendment be removed from MSBA advocacy positions is that it is not consistent with the smooth operation of schools and providing continuity of instruction. It can also be used as a tool to remove staff without appropriate due process. The wording of section four, item J, infers that Missouri school boards as a whole are opposed to teacher tenure. Many school boards see tenure as a way to stabilize their workforce and retain highly qualified staff. This amendment is intended to encourage MSBA to remove this item from the advocacy positions before it reaches the floor of the delegate assembly in the fall. However, if they choose to keep item J in the advocacy positions, we encourage MSBA to provide an opportunity for additional dialogue related to, excuse me, related to MSBA and its member districts' perceptions of the impact of renewable contracts in lieu of tenure. The Lee Summit R seven school board acknowledges that there are times when it may become necessary to terminate the contract of a tenured teacher and that there are processes defined in Missouri school statutes to provide for such action when appropriate. We believe that our current practices provide for stability of our workforce as well as assist in retaining quality teachers and fostering a climate that results in improved morale while protecting staff from negative political forces. So in essence, that's, that's what we're asking MSBA to do, is to please remove that from the advocacy platform because we are in favor of teacher tenure in our district.
Okay, at this point, I will accept a motion.
I would move that the board approve the MSBA two thousand and seventeen legislative advocacy amendment as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, second, is there any discussion on this item? Jackie?
I have a question, in the context of the MSBA government relations program, do we have some understanding of why they are taking this position?
No, not officially.
Did we inquire?
Yes.
Okay.
But we didn't get a specific answer. We're not the only district that had some objection to this. This was actually raised back in two thousand and fifteen by University City. And it was presented at that point to the Legislative Platform Committee, and they, they heard the proposal, but decided not to place it on the ballot to be voted on for reasons unbeknownst to, to us. So that, and, and at that point, our board. So that, and, and at that point, our board at that point drafted a resolution just saying that we disagreed. We are early enough in the process this year that we can actually draft a position statement that, that goes to them that would require that they either vote on it or tell us that they're not going to. So I think we were, we were trying to get ahead of the game a little bit this time to get that out there. We also know that Warrensburg, I think, is supportive of this as well. So there are other districts that are in support. There are a number of problems with this statement. First of all, this statement says, it uses some terminology that I'm not sure is exactly correct. It says that, that was, what was it? Renewable contracts and lifetime contracts. Well, technically, there are no lifetime contracts in the state of Missouri. There are permanent contracts and probationary contracts. And those two contracts, it, a permanent contract merely means that a teacher is rehired at the same salary as they were the previous year if there's no contract presented, correct, Jeff? But at the same position that the- Right. Which does, which is not the same thing as a lifetime contract, which implies that once you're hired and you get to a point where you get one of these, you can never be fired. That's just simply not the case. And there are plenty of processes in place, both statutory and through our own district evaluation system that allows us to evaluate teacher performance and release those teachers who are not performing as they should. So we don't really feel that we need to change the law in order for us to do an effective job of monitoring teacher performance. So that's the basic root of this, of this question. Other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, our personnel requests. Item 10.04. Is this Dr. Carpenter? Do you have this one or Dr. Miller, do you have this?
Okay. Administration recommends that the Board of Education approve the additional 14 FTE for bus drivers and bus aides as you heard earlier in the Financial Committee's report.
Okay, I will accept a motion on this one.
I move that the Board of Education approve the additional 14 FTE for bus drivers and bus aides.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the approval of our CSIP Plan, 10.05.
I will defer to Dr. Carter.
My apologies. We will annually bring to you amendments to and revisions to our CSIP program, which, or Strategic Plan, which was presented to you with revisions during work session last month. Most critical for your attention and knowledge this evening as you have reviewed and approved our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, Coin Destination 2021, is to be aware that as we embark upon our work in the area of instruction and focus on student achievement, that work will also be informed by the Academic Systems Review, which you have been privy to that particular report and had opportunity to engage in some early analysis of that particular report. That report will inform our work going forward. Therefore, you can anticipate likely next spring additional amendments, which will create a marriage really between that particular report and our strategic plan going forward with that emphasis to address the recommendations as we see fit going forward with the goal of impacting student achievement.
Yeah, I'll accept a motion, please.
I move that the board approve the updated Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, known as Destination 2021, for the 2017-2018 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Kim, did you still have? Anyone have any, any questions or discussion on this item? Very well, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, motion carries. Okay, the next item is 10.06. This is to approve our curriculum revisions.
So I will defer to Dr. Collier.
Yes, and at this time, I would invite Dr. Eric Flack forward. You can see there in the report, the recommended revisions. Those have been occurring in multiple phases. And Dr. Flack is available this evening to answer any questions that you may have relative to the changes identified in the document attached there for you.
Let's get a motion on the table here, please. Just scroll back up to it. It's way back up at the top.
No motion. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the new curriculum and curriculum revisions as presented.
Second. Okay, now we have a motion and a second. And we can accept questions and commentary from anyone on the board. Kim?
Okay, having worked on curriculum revisions many times in the past, I just wanted to say that it's obvious in reading through this document, which is very, very long and very, very detailed, that your teachers and your staff members did a fabulous job. It's, I know how much work that is. The tremendous amount of work. I know as a teacher, when you head into this process, you get major headaches. And they did a very, very nice job. So please pass the thanks on to the staff members who all worked on this for us. And I asked Dr. Flack a question about this earlier. I said, when I looked through it, I said, well, where are the, you know, revisions for this subject or where are the revisions for this course? And he said, oh, we only have enough money to do a certain amount. Is that true?
Well, it's partly the money, but it's partly, it's within a cycle. And you also, if you're looking at some of the areas that you were looking at, we want to make sure that we have, we don't pull teachers out of their classrooms too much because you're absolutely right. It's the, it's a lot of teacher work. And so if a teacher is on multiple curriculum committees, as in some departments they would need to be, it's too difficult to pull them out in one year. Otherwise, it just taxes that teacher and it puts a substitute in that class too many times. So we have to, we have to stagger those to make sure that we don't tax individual teachers and students too much.
Dr. Flack, when does this process start? How long have you been working on this?
It's a two-year process for curriculum revision. And so the first year, they review and look at national standards and start the work of writing the curriculum. And then the second year, they, they complete that and look at assessments and all make sure that everything's aligned. Your process takes a teacher probably, on average, about eight days a year. And that's a combination of substitute days, summer work, after school, that type of thing, so.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Flack. And item 10.07, to approve the meal prices for the 2017-18 school year.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this item, we will refer this over to Dr. Hedrick.
Thank you. We have an item here for the board's consideration to amend the lunch prices based on a couple of factors annually. And since 2011, we're required to do a calculation called the paid lunch equity to ensure that we're not utilizing federal funding to subsidize meals for students who pay full price for, for their meals. And so in doing that calculation, there are a number of factors involved in that. But in doing that calculation annually, our Nutrition Services this year has calculated that our lunch prices need to increase a minimum of five cents. You will notice that some of the prices at the various levels, for example, at the high school, we're requesting a 10 cent increase there. And the rationale for that increase is really due to an evaluation of our costs at the, at the high school level are higher than they are at the middle school and elementary, primarily due to the number of fruits and vegetable options that we offer. So we have those prices for you there. And also, I think we've included a comparison of meal prices with, with other Kansas City metro school districts for, in terms of competitive and the fact that we're kind of still in mid-pack there and not at the higher or lower end of our meal prices for our students and adults that participate. So that's my comments. Jane Hensworth is here, who's our Nutrition Services Director. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the 2017-2018 meal prices as proposed.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Well, let's, go ahead.
I just have a question about the premier meals. Can you share with that, what that is for our audience? What that consists of? All right. What the difference is between the regular and the premier?
I think it's on. The premier entrees cost more.
Uh huh.
For example, I shared with the Finance Committee, a regular entree averages about 50 cents, whereas the premier entrees average between 70 and a dollar. So example, chicken nuggets on a regular lunch versus chicken tenders on a premier lunch. So it's, it's basically the main entree cost. The fruits and vegetable offerings and the milk offerings are the same.
Very good, thank you.
I, yesterday, yesterday in our finance meeting, I was really pleased and brought up the, the question, how are we able to stay basically middle of the road with our, with our prices, with things are? And I, I knew the answer to part of this because I know over the years, we have outstanding nutrition service. I, I probably the wrong title for it, but the managers in each one of our buildings, they work very hard to take care of everybody, do, do what they can. One little thing I'd forgotten, and we did this several years ago, Jane would know exactly when, but we have a large freezer. I don't know if it's the largest in the metropolitan area or not, but we have a large freezer that we can buy food-
More competitively.
More competitively. And I had never thought of that, but the fine work of our nutrition people, just another example of providing for kids, getting them on that bus and getting them here and getting them fed and getting them home. I just, I, the freezer had completely escaped me on that.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, motion carries. Our personnel report.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we recommend that the personnel transactions be approved as presented and contracts issued.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table, please.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion and/or questions or comments? Very well, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. And we do not have any formal presentations tonight. There are several written reports. Miller Park Student Center Handbook and the Annual Program Evaluation for the Aquatic Center and the Construction and Maintenance Update. Do any of the board members have any questions about any of those written reports? Questions or comments? Jackie?
I really enjoyed the opportunity to read over the Annual Program Evaluation on the Aquatic Center. Let's just say I have some ties to some folks in the family that have utilized that facility. And I've had the opportunity to be a bench warmer there. So it's, it's a great facility and a real asset to the community as well as to our students.
Thank you. At this point, we will move to our roundtable. And I think I'm going to start down on your end. Jackie?
Well, I think the board discussion earlier this evening about our goals for the year that Dr. Carpenter presented as a result of our two days of meetings last month, I just echo the comments earlier. I think it was a very good use of time for the board to come together and to create a path forward. And we're looking forward to doing that. And then I'm looking forward to next month completing my statutorily required education.
Dennis?
Just, we had the opportunity, we all had the opportunity. Someone's were, were able to go out to, to the institute of the day. And I just wanted to say, and I'm sure there were many, but Dr. Collier, it almost made me want to come back and be a principal again. Almost! But no, in all seriousness, the, the information at that little, when we got there about 11:30, in, in the data that you were providing and the look across that room and see outstanding personnel in there that, it, it was, it was really cool. Because that, that is, that is what it's all about, is where we can get these kiddos. And thank you and thank all the others who I know throughout those two days participated. And I'm anxious to be working with you all this year as we, as we go through that. Phyllis, little difference here, but I know that you are retired and you're to be congratulated. And the reason I bring that up at a board meeting is it is always so neat to see former students who come home, start a business, an entrepreneur. And I, you are to be commended. That, that's, that's a goal, I think, that we all have set up here. And there's others, Julie's involved, that are entrepreneurs and come home and provide great services to, to their, to the student, or to the kids. And so congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you.
And President White, happy birthday. Only reason I know that my mom is 92 today and he celebrates the same birthday and he's just a little younger and she is.
I'm not 92.
And Dennis, one of my nieces is also celebrating her 13th birthday.
Okay, so that's pretty cool. That's all, President.
Phyllis?
Shockingly, I have a fairly short report this month. I want to announce that in June, my students, my daughter's competition team from Steppenout went to Panama City to an extremely competitive nationals. And they came home with a senior national championship and they did a fantastic job. At that time, I realized that after 28 years, my daughter, the kids are in good hands with her. And so I did choose to retire. I had an offer on my building that I could not resist. And when I say I could not resist, it's an expensive building. And I did get a really great prize for it. So I have sold it. I close next week. And I have retired. And my daughter has started her own dance business. And it really didn't dawn on me until recently when she said, Mom, I'm so tired of hearing, that's how, that's not how Ms. Phyllis did it. That's not how, that's not how your mom did it. And so she's starting her own business and I'm really proud of her. And so, she's starting her own business, and I'm really proud of her because she is also a product of our community, went to our schools here, went to New York City, had a great career there, came home, and she is the next generation of dance. I will be involved, but I will not be teaching. I'm taking a year off. I've had already about six job offers, three in my dance industry and three in other areas. So, I probably will be back to work within a month. I'm looking for an exciting next step. I really am. And it will not be involved in dance more than likely. I'm really excited about some opportunities that have come up. So, but I do have time now, more, to focus in on this and love my Board's service and thank you so much. My four generations of my family are in this community. So, we all back here doing our thing and lovingly summit more than ever. And I bought an RV, by the way. Best thing I've done in a long, long time, most fun I've had. So, that's another time.
Yeah?
All right. I wanted to kind of piggyback on Dennis's comments about the administrative retreat this week. Had the pleasure of staying after lunch and watching that first, or listening to the first session on dealing with crisis situations. And I just have to say that I haven't seen a funnier video in a long time than the one Janice Phelan put together for our administrators. It was fabulous. I think you ought to nominate it for some kind of an award in your industry, Janice, because it is that good. It really made its point, but in a lighthearted way. I'm sure the staff really appreciated seeing that video. I'd also like to welcome, I think it's their first time up here at the dais tonight, Dr. Sharp. And it was Dr. Coram before she went on vacation, and then she came back, Dr.?
Kephard.
Kephard. Okay, so she's now newly married. But welcome to both of you. Glad to have you up here with us. I also wanted to just say very quickly, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. In the past month, two people who were very important to our school district have passed away, and I attended both of their funerals in this past month. Mr. Bob Bruce was on the Board of Education for 12 years and served as President of the Board for several of those years. And then, also Dr. Linda Bigby, who was the Director of Special Education in the district. I believe from 1986 to 2000, she also taught at the University of Central Missouri and was my advisor on my specialist paper. These are two very hardworking and dedicated individuals who served our district well, and I just wanted to remember them tonight and their families and thank them for their service to us. Thank you.
Julie?
Let me, don't want to forget about Ted Hob, too. He was, made me look beautiful my senior year. So, just kind of hard to do. So, I think that's all I have, but I do like the new chairs. I hope they're comfy.
I noticed those tonight.
Because those other ones are kind of, but anyway, that is it. Thank you.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, I've enjoyed my first weeks on the job, and I'm just really, really fortunate to have such a dedicated team that knows how to go about the work. Just awesome in every regard. So far, we've had some difficult items that we've been processing on the operations side, and Dr. Hendrick has really hit the ground running in those areas and leading through those processes. And when I think about the instructional focus around this notion of each student, meaning literally each student, I've had several conversations with Dr. Collier, and she's transforming these words into visible and tangible action that some of you had a chance to see the other day. So, we're just super excited. Dr. Miller, and some of the work that you saw tonight around really grappling with this notion of should our student population be mirrored by way of our staff? And he would say that he's grappled with this for several years, and I have no reason to believe he has not. But now, we've got to put some systems in place to try and address that as we look at this notion of being a part of what the area calls the Big Five. And I think we saw some data the other day, Mr. President, Board members, that suggests that although we're phenomenal and we have this tradition of excellence, there's so much opportunity for us to do some key work if we're going to remain a member of the Big Five and lead the Big Five. Because I don't want to be the superintendent where we have to come to the Board and say the new term is the Big Six or the Big Seven because we slid down. I don't think that's going to sit too well. So, we're going to make certain that we maintain a stronghold within that Big Five, and I think we have the right people. Building leaders are just so energetic and excited, and I think we are on our way. I can also say, Ms. Phyllis, that my daughter has retired her first dance teacher already because my wife went over and filled out the paperwork and got my daughter registered. I think it was on a Monday, and by Wednesday, everyone was telling me Ms. Phyllis had retired. And so, my daughter hasn't had a lesson yet, but she's retired her first dance teacher. So, no, that's all I have.
She's in good hands.
Great few weeks.
Thank you. I will, the only comment that I wanted to make is that it is my birthday, actually, actually today is my birthday. And if you've noticed, I have this bow tie. This is a gift from my eight-year-old grandson today, and I was supposed to wear it, which I did. I started out with it actually on, and I was going to wear it, but it kept falling off. And I thought that might be a distraction, so I moved it. So, if you see Hendrick's, you'll have to tell him his grandpa did wear the bow tie. Just don't tell him I didn't wear it on that part. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem like that long ago that I got off of an airplane and made a phone call to Joe Underwood's office to say, Dr. Underwood, I'm back in town, and I really wanted to come in and talk to you about a job. And at that point, Dr. Underwood's secretary said, well, you might as well forget it because we already filled that position. So, that was the start of a very long day that ended up with somebody, Jim Brockman, saying to me, well, young man, if we were to offer you a contract today, would you take it? And I believe my exact words were, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. And that was in 1974. But it just doesn't seem like that long ago. So, every birthday, you know, they start, I don't know whether you all have noticed it, but you've noticed that your birthdays are getting closer together? I've noticed that. It seems like I just had one last week. So, but it's been, it's been an enjoyable 40-plus years here in Re Summit and looking forward to 40 more. So, that's all I have, and there being no other business to come before this board, we are adjourned.